We got our microphones on.
Yep.
Doctor, are we ready?
I got my ears plugged.
Hey Nolan, I'm gonna hit the gavel.
Nolan, be ready.
I'm ready, maybe.
We'd like to welcome everybody to Cache County Council meeting tonight, April 9th. We'll go ahead and start with the opening by Councilmember Sandy Goodlander.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just really glad to be here tonight with all these fine people that we work with and love this county and the people who live in it. And I'm really grateful for this opportunity. And I'll finish my remarks with a prayer. Our dear Father, which art in heaven. We are so grateful for the many blessings that we have. We're grateful to live in a free country and we're grateful for this beautiful valley that we call home and for the good people that live here that we get to live among. We're grateful for those who serve in the armed forces that put themselves in harm's way for our freedom and safety. And we ask you to please watch over and bless them and their families and bless them with safety and peace. And Father, please bless us to be mindful of our neighbors and those in our community who need help both physically or financially and things that we can do to help them. And we would ask you to please watch over us tonight. Bless us with the ability to think clearly, to speak kindly, and to take care of the business of the county that needs to be done so that we can take care of the responsibilities that we've been given. And we pray for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Will you all join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and accept a motion on approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. How about the minutes from March 26th? Actually, we have two sets of minutes, March 26th, 2024, and then the Board of Canvassers, March 18th, 2024. Should I vote? Should we vote on those separate? Because I know some of us were not at the one and...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 26th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve those minutes of March 26th, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. How about the, those that were at the Board of Canvassers?
I move that we approve the Board of Canvassers' minutes from March 18th.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we pass the Board of Canvassers' minutes for March 18th, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll refuse myself on that one because I was not at that particular meeting. Report, County Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd just like to excuse County Executive Zook. He's coming back with his family from a trip and will be back in the office tomorrow. In addition, Janine wanted me to share that the Fire District Board of Trustees' applications are open. They're on the county website and in a few other places. And she said, she wanted me to tell everyone that you can go to the public notices spot on the county website, follow the link, and we have one application turned in so far.
How many openings are there?
Two.
Three? Two?
Because there's already one.
Two.
Right.
One is executive and then two.
Yeah. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and 6A, Alma. Alma Burgess, Cache County Grants Manager, shares some information on ARPA funds.
Thank you for inviting me back. This seems to be the topic of conversation everywhere, ARPA. So I just want to cover a few things related to ARPA and hopefully it will all make sense by the end. The main thing that I wanted to come and talk about is because the end of the year is coming very rapidly, December 31st, 2024. We need to have all of the funds, ARPA funds that the county received obligated in projects, and they have to be obligated with contract. And so I'm working very closely with all of the departments, looking at their overages, anything that might be going over. And I want to keep you as a council very apprised of that update. One of the things that I wanted to talk about is from Terrell Warner. She is requesting a little bit, a different use of her funds that she's received, and I want to explain that. So in April of 2022, she talked to the finance staff and it was discovered that they were talking about on-call and on-scene response pay and realized that they were not getting this and there were some things corrected there. And one of the things that the ARPA funds can pay is for critical staff, those who take a very, an important part of the response to the pandemic. And they realized that they were not getting the pay. And she worked with, at that time, John Luthy, the interim county attorney, and requested that they, she was going to put in a request for some ARPA funding to compensate the employees. And that never came about because Attorney Luthy was going to work on some compensation and was going to go in another direction. Just recently, she realized that that compensation was never provided to the victim advocates. And so what she is doing is she is asking that the funds that she's already been awarded, she's not asking for additional amount of money, but using some of the funds that she already has to compensate her victim advocates. As we've been talking about this for the last week or 10 days, we wanted to make sure that she was falling within the correct stipulations, that it was eligible, and which it is. But there was a certain timeframe between March 3rd of 2021 and April 10th of 2023. She had a few hours outside of that, and so we adjusted it. And she worked on a spreadsheet and we, along with Brittany and the Finance Administration, adjusted the hours and everything. And she is requesting $12,700, thereabouts, and a few pennies to be used from her already awarded funds to compensate her victim advocates. Again, she's not asking for additional funds. She's just asking that it be approved, that she could pay them that money as they had gone out on call and helped during the pandemic. So that's what she's asking.
What had the funds been earmarked for prior to that?
The funds, she was awarded $1,050,000 or $60,000 in a lot of different projects. Some were for helping with food, gas, the other individuals', mental health. There was quite a number of things. And originally, if I can just refresh your memory, originally it was put in like six or eight different buckets of money, pots of money, if you will. And then we were realizing that some of them were going to go over and some of them were going to go under. And so she came to the council and asked that she could just lump them all together and we could just kind of adjust them. She wouldn't go over her total awarded money, but then she could just move it around and use that for what you had already approved. And so she was, she would just be using that, which would take a little bit away, I think, well, the $12,700 away from other things she wouldn't be able to cover. So she's not asking for the additional amounts, just what she's already been awarded. Did that answer your question?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that something wasn't going to be left unfunded that was a critical...
No, there's, she will still have plenty of money. Of course, at some point, it's going to run out. And she's been, you know, letting people know. And we've been concerned and saying, you need to let people know that this is not an ongoing process or a service that the county is going to be able to provide. These funds will eventually go away. So, yeah, it won't take away from any current, she will still be able to provide services.
Thanks.
Other questions? Entertained a motion to, if you want to approve that, I guess we could go ahead and do that and we could approve that change right now, couldn't we?
I would make a motion that we approve the request for the $12,700 to be moved from various departments or categories to help compensate the victims' advocates for call-out during COVID.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we allow that, those transfers to happen within the ARPA money for victim advocates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead if you would.
All right, thank you.
Good for that queue to go.
I, you got a few other things and I'll try and really be brief. The applications process for the county departments was opened again, and actually that is actually closed for $480,000 or something like that we received. I just want to give you an update of the next steps. 10 applications were received. And of those 10, as I'm, just a brief overview, there's two of them that are for sure eligible. There's another three, three that are probably eligible, and then some of the others I need to do a little more research. The next step will be, these were all, they applied online. And so I've been working with Mica and I've got the list for the Appropriations Committee. I will be sharing that link with the Appropriations Committee. And they will review those applications and then they will meet on April 26th and discuss those and then make some recommendations to the council. And then it can be brought to the council as to what awards, what will be funded, and what recommendations they make. I can also share with the remainder of the council, the applications as well, so all of you have access to all of the applications, if that's what you desire. Just wanted to give you an update on that. Any questions about that process? Okay.
I do.
Yes.
Does that use up the totality of the remaining balance?
Oh, yes. So there was $480,000 available. The request for, from the 10, if they're all eligible, the total request is $758,000. So that will totally be used up.
And is there a way, a follow-up question if I may? Is there a way, some of these have been coming under the budget requested amount? Is there a way to kind of have like, these are our priorities for the top amount of money and these are, you know, just because it's such a time-consuming thing to bring it to us and we have to have these committed by the end of the year? Is there a way we could set up like, these are the Plan B for any excess money that we could prioritize and for, you know, any overages from any of the projects?
That's the main reason why I've come this evening. I just wanted to give you an update on these other things, is talking about the overages and the under. And so I want to, before I do that, I want to just give you a really quick update. I do report quarterly to the U.S. Treasury. So on this next report that's due by the end of this month, I will report another approximately 400 and, or $540,000, and there's still about 9.7 million that needs to be obligated. That sounds like a lot, but I have been talking to the, to them and I really think that we can do this, but I think we need a, you need a plan. So I do want to talk about that. Let me give you a couple of examples. First off, you already approved a water line in Richmond. That was with the Public Works Department at their facility west of Richmond. They requested some money to put in water lines and some fire service lines. And they have been, the contractor is in the process of putting that in and installing. So what they did is when they got the bid, it came a little bit over and so they kind of backed off on some of the things. And they're not going to put in all of the fire connections and all the water connections. They will be able to complete it. It will be able to get water to the facility, but they're, they're looking at maybe about $30,000 short in, in the amount of money that they have been awarded, that they may need so that they can complete the project as it was, as it was engineered and put in. There's a couple of ways that you could handle that. Some of the materials could be purchased by the Public Works and they could go as close to the amount that was awarded. And then they would have those materials that would be obligated to be spent. Money is spent by the end of 2026, we'll be all right. One of the problems, and the U.S. Treasury has made this very clear, that once you've obligated the money by December 31st, 2024, change orders, which is usually meaning more money, and it's usually with contracts or construction projects, change orders cannot take place after December 31st. So one of the issues, and you brought that up very greatly, is if a project is obligated to pay a certain amount and some change orders come in after December 31st, how will you pay for it? Where will that money come from? Wanted to provide a couple of choices that you may have. You do have the fund balance. There, most of the money from the standard allowance has been spent and it's in fund balance. But I want to remind you of another pot of money that is, it was funded under the Americans with, American Rescue Act for the pandemic. And this is called the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. You've received, the county has received two of those payments. They are recorded as unearned. They are not in the general fund. And so those funds are there. They were given from the Act, ARPA Act, but they don't have the restrictions of eligibility, of timelines, and all of that. The only thing that you can't spend them on is lobbying. Any other government services, you can spend them on. Those were received in two payments of $226,288 each. So there's roughly, what, $450,000 there? That's a possibility that could be used for overages. And then, you know, as we look at the project out here in the parking lot, hopefully it will get under contract, they'll get underway, and hopefully we'll know if there's going to be any change orders and you will be able to have some of that money go into another project or paying for some overages or whatever you want to do. I will try and keep you, I've shared a file with you that we use as, for reporting, and hopefully that will give you some updates. And I will try and keep you updated either by coming here or through emails. And you can always call and ask questions, but I want to keep you updated.
And also Appropriations Committee.
Yes.
That's, that would be the...
Yes, I could, I can make regular...
Go there and say, here's the status, here we go, here we go, here we go.
Okay.
That'd be great.
It'd be great in each meeting we have until, is it the 18th?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Unless you want to always practice your public speaking skills, that's...
I'd rather not be recorded. I'd rather go to a little smaller room and group of people. But I can give regular updates to the Appropriations Committee. That's a great idea. So unless you have any questions, there is one other one that I wanted to bring up. I know this has been on a lot of people's discussions and minds for quite some time. And I am just looking at it from, well, when I was hired two and a half years ago. Cameron said to me, okay, here's these books. This is all the final rules, the interim final rules, all the questions and answers. You need to read these and understand them and we need to obligate and spend all of this money. And so I'm taking this hopefully seriously and I want to make sure that you're apprised of it so that you can make decisions in a timely manner. But one of the ones that, that is, it's been a topic for quite some time, for probably over a year. And it's a significant amount of money. And as I become aware of other significant pots of money, I will let you know. But this is one that I think we need to have a discussion about. This is on the accounting software, the request, what you awarded was $607,500. It needs to be obligated by the end of this year or put somewhere else if that route is not, either way, I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's, it's there and it needs to be either spent on that or moved somewhere else. And we are running out of time to do that.
We have some, at least I have some study and analysis that I need to do to determine which way to go on that software. I'm glad we have a week to deal with it.
Yeah, I actually did quite a bit of study today. I've spoken to county auditors and city finance managers from around the state. And I don't, I think I'd like to compose my thoughts and maybe write them down for the rest of the council, but I feel like right now it's, it's, it's good that we take the time to gather all the information we can, especially where we don't have an auditor, we don't have a finance director. There's, there's not somebody to say, let me take that and I will make it happen because it's going to be really complex if we make a change. And so we just need to look at, you know, what are the deficiency of Cassell? You know, Cassell has been working. What are the things that make it difficult to use? And is, are those things worth taking more money and maybe a really complex project? And so I just think we all need to make sure we have the same information and that we look at that really carefully and make sure that we, I think we still have time to obligate that money.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not...
I know it's, I know it's urgent, but I think we can, I think we can make that choice.
Yeah, I'm not saying that any decisions need to be made. I just wanted you to be aware of that. And I will bring that, any other projects, you know, there's the $150,000 from the parking lot project, the $607,000 here. And as I become aware of others, I will let you know so that you will have sufficient time to make decisions.
I think it's good that we're starting that conversation and let's find out what else we need to know.
Yeah.
And thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, appreciate it.
Okay.
Appreciate the update. I really do.
Thank you.
Mica, 10A. Organization introduction format of the policy manual. And by the way, that, yeah, that is in our packet, so.
Yeah, it should be in your packet. Got it up here on the screen now. So you'll recall at the end of last year, I think it was the last council meeting of last year, this body passed Resolution 2023-28, which created the countywide policy manual for Cache County. This is not the same thing as the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, though a great deal of that manual will eventually migrate into the countywide policy manual. The difference between the two is simply that the PPP, Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, is administered by the Office of Personnel Management and essentially deals with all personnel matters. So anything dealing with personnel and, you know, hiring, you know, the benefits, pay, anything that's going to be administered by the Office of Personnel Management. Countywide Policy Manual is basically for all other policies of the county, countywide policies. Both manuals are amended through resolution. And so most resolutions, other than budget resolutions from this point forward, will have, will state near the beginning of the resolution whether it amends the PPP manual or this new countywide policy manual. So what this resolution does is it creates just the bare-bones structure, oh, I don't have, this is the wrong, the wrong file that I pulled up here. Here we go. What this resolution does is it creates just the structure and format of the countywide policy manual. It doesn't actually add any new policies to it. So if this resolution passes tonight, we will have an empty countywide policy manual until further resolutions change that. So this is the table of contents and I've just, this will be the numbering format. This is going to be numbered differently than the PPP manual, just to make it a little bit easier to distinguish between the two. And we have some sections there. Again, this is a living document, so these can be amended. The reason I chose those, those particular section names is because we do have existing policies that were ready to basically migrate into each of those sections. So for example, I have, this was provided to me by our attorney's office. This is Resolution 89-2. So this is a resolution that's older than I am and it's... And it states that the county office buildings will remain closed on Saturday and that the Office of Clerk, Sheriff, Recorder, Auditor, Treasurer, and Attorney will be open from 8 to 5.
Dated when?
It's dated the 3rd of January, 1989.
That's older than you, huh?
That's older than me, yep. Yep, signed by Council Chair C. Dennis Funk. So this would go in that Section 4 Buildings Grounds Maintenance, and so I wouldn't just simply insert this into the countywide policy manual. Even adding an existing policy will still be done through resolution. So if you want to make an amendment to this 35-year-old policy, you'll be free to do so. So that's all this has. It does have an introduction to the countywide policy manual. Where did it go? That states basically what I just stated before, that this is a manual of all county policies other than personnel policies. And so, and it'll be created through resolution. And that's really all that we've got. So that's the resolution.
Now we have this, we will have this set up. Then O and P can make sure that all these scenes are organized and are in there so that we have, like you say, a working document.
Yep, yep.
For the entire, and this is the one that covers the entire county.
Yes, yes, and that's important to clarify.
Not just the personnel, so.
Yeah, and for example, we are working on like a whistleblower policy. And that will be under the Ethics, Section 2. You know, revenue and finance, there are some things that exist in county code even, that will still be in county code, but that will then just be copy and pasted into Resolution, the countywide policy manual. Just because I think county employees are probably more likely to consult a policy manual than maybe county code when they're not sure how to do something. The revenue and finance is going to be a lot of the practices that we've already instituted, dealing with revenue and finance and expenditures, budgeting, things like that. Any other questions?
Very good. Any other questions?
One thing I did fail to mention is we are going to put this online. This will be on the county website. And I'm not sure exactly where, but I'll be talking to Bart to make that happen. We'll find a home for it.
Terrific. No questions?
All right.
Let's move right.
Best read one we've had, so.
Let's move right into, it is initial proposal. Let's go, let's discuss it or however you, whatever the favor of the council is. We would have to suspend the rules to pass this tonight.
I move to suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2024-08.
Seconded. Seconded, suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2024-08. Any discussion? We're going to break it. All who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Looking your trigger happy.
I am, I'm getting ready. No, UAC, any changes on any of those? An additions, deletions?
Everyone's name is on here has already had accommodations prepared, unless there's a question mark.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't reserved a room for Dave.
Plan on me.
But yes, everyone except Dave has a room. And it's at the.
What nights do you have rooms for? Just Tuesday?
Monday and Tuesday night.
Monday and Tuesday nights.
Yes, yes, the 30th and the 1st. And so let me know if you want to stay the last night, because it does get out at like 5:00.
It does?
And, well.
We're leaving early.
We're leaving early.
Your home weather anyways.
He drives like at night.
The car?
Not San Diego. It gets over at 5:00. Can you see the agenda?
Four or five, but it's like the last few items, from 1 to 4 or 1 to 5, it's like.
Breakout sessions.
Breakout sessions. So the reason I booked the rooms that way is because that's when the rates were. So there wasn't a UAC rate for, what is that Wednesday night? There wasn't a UAC rate for that night, so I didn't book one. But I can book one if you need.
Which hotel is it?
Hilton Garden.
Hilton Garden, and it's right next to the conference center. I'll verify that.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Mica.
Yes. Hey, how about, we are limited and I failed to recognize Councilmember Barbara Tidwell and Mark Hird that they are absent. Sorry for not recognizing them, that they are gone. Let's go ahead and Councilmember reports. Let's start down here. Carl.
You know, I don't have anything to report. Okay. Just Thursday at 12:00, there is going to be a meeting at the BRAG offices in their boardroom regarding broadband. You know, they got a bunch of money for broadband in the state and they've been trying to work out those maps. We've been waiting forever. They finally released the maps. And so there's going to be a discussion. If there's any money to be applied for, we want to make sure that we, our county is on top of that. So anybody that wants to come, I don't know if you all got that email.
Is there a company that's spearheading that? I know Utopia.
There would be several, they said there would be several companies there to talk about it. I don't really understand exactly what the process is going to be. I just know that, I know Box Elder County already got a bunch of money.
There's money to be had, you want to try and make sure.
Is it for the county or is it focusing on incorporated or more rural areas? Do you know? Sorry if I'm asking.
The service, it depends on the areas that need to be serviced.
Under served, they're looking at underserved areas. Yeah, and to see if some of the providers are willing to help, to provide that service. So I don't understand it completely, but I'm going to go and try and listen, so.
Anybody else that wants to come, that would be, it's at 12 o'clock on the 11th, Thursday.
Yep.
I don't have anything, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nothing either. Okay, I don't have anything either, so I'll put that in mind.
I moved the adjourn.
She's over there smiling, saying, she's ready to write down the time. Nothing else, then we'll go ahead and adjourn.